The Spanish Fork Corral. Thank you so much.
If you want to get ahead in this world, it all starts with a beautiful smile. Now you can smile with confidence, with straighter and wider teeth. Say goodbye to that crooked smile and without those ugly braces. Gunnerson Dental is the only certified practice in Utah Valley for the new CPAS process. It's nearly invisible and it takes as few as six months, perfect for our adult lifestyles. Visit our website, excellencebychoice.net, and schedule your appointment today. Get the smile you want at Gunnerson Dental, in Payson.
2015 is an election year in Spanish Fork. On the ballot are three city council member seats. The Spanish Fork Salem Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Meet the Candidate Night on October the 8th at the Senior Center from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. We invite you to come and meet those that are running for city council. Spanish Fork 17 will broadcast the event live on SFCN and on YouTube. Come meet the candidates, October the 8th at 7:00 p.m. Voting is your right and responsibility.
We'd like to get started. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here in our chamber. And all those who are viewing this on TV, welcome. We'd like to get started. I've asked Allison Isaac, Miss Spanish Fork, to come up and give our inspirational message and our invocation.
Hello, my name's Allison Isaac, as you all may know. Rachel Lynn actually asked me to prepare a little bit of a spiritual/inspirational message and in listening to a lot of inspirational talks over the weekend, I came up with one that really stood out to me that I'd really like to share with you. And it goes, "I met a stranger in the night whose lamp had ceased to shine. I paused and let him light his lamp for mine. A tempest sprang up later on and shook the world about. And when the wind was gone, my lamp was out. But back came to me the stranger, his lamp was glowing fine. He held his precious flame and lighted mine." And that really stood out to me. And besides, I'm having the job as Miss Spanish Fork, I work at a restaurant, which is one of the greatest jobs in the world. Not really, I was having a really bad day yesterday. And a stranger came up to me and he said, "You look like you need a J-Dog." And he gave me $6 and he told me to go buy a J-Dog, which really, you know, made me so happy and it really brought this light that I really needed that day. And that light and that inspiration, just from a stranger doing something so little, really, really inspired me to share my light and the light that I have and give it to others. And I encourage each one of you, whether we have some sort of title or not, to give our light to others this week and to look for those who are in need of a little bit of assistance and a little bit of help. And I share that with you today. Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads before thee as a city council and as leaders and as citizens of Spanish Fork, we are truly grateful for the opportunity to listen here and to communicate the needs of our city. And we ask thee that thou will help us to have an open heart and an open mind, that we will listen to those words and those inspirations that our leaders have prepared and help us to make wise decisions that will affect our city for the better. We are truly grateful for this beautiful land that we live in and for the safety and protection that thou hast blessed upon our city. We are so very thankful for the people and the citizens of Spanish Fork and the light that they bring to our lives every day. We are truly grateful for thee in our lives and we ask thee that thou will help us to share our light with those who need it this week. We are truly grateful for all that thou has done for us and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thanks, Allison. Okay. I've asked Councilman Davis to lead us in the pledge legion.
Will the audience please arise? Will the audience please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go into our public comments. Anyone that has anything that they'd like to address the mayor of the council, you may come up and state your name and addresses.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Rick Evans. You might recall, I came to see you a couple meetings ago to ask if you would be willing for the city to allow us to use some city facilities for debate on the life center issue. And you were gracious enough to say you thought that was a good thing. City staff has been supportive and we were a little slow out of the chute, but we have a pretty enthusiastic group willing to engage that debate. It'll be October 26th, Monday evening, 7:00, at the Ponderosa Building on the fairgrounds. And rather than just give you the date and sit down, first of all, you'd be shocked if I were that brief, and second of all, I really would like to share something with you that I thought was rather interesting as we went to do this. I think many of you are aware that we've been through a pretty extensive process as a city involved in this, and probably one of the questions that have gone through a lot of people's minds is why in the heck would we do one more? What's the point of a debate? And I think I can answer that question for you and for anybody who's watching this evening, for the folks here, that it's actually worth doing, and I'll share with you some very specific reasons why, and maybe that'll encourage folks to attend or watch on SFCN or follow up later. Because a very interesting thing happened as we put this together. You're all aware that there have been public meetings. The first ones were orchestrated by the consultant that you hired in terms of giving out information. There were a few times where the public was encouraged to ask some questions here and there, but primarily they're informational. It was, "These are the things we've learned, these are the facts, these are the figures," and so on. They were good meetings. We've had public hearings where in some cases, people stepped up to the microphone and grumbled or enthusiastically went one direction or whatever, but again, primarily kind of question and answer and move on and so on. They were also good discussions. I think they answered a lot of good questions and I wouldn't say that was time wasted in any way, it was a really good thing. We've had informational sessions. I know, for example, Mr. Perrins has visited the Chamber of Commerce and some other organizations. I don't think he's the only one, but I know he's logged a lot of miles going out. And again, my assumption, I haven't seen them, but I've heard a lot of feedback, that they've been really good. They're positive, they're informational, they're so on. So why in the world would we do a debate? Well, I put out this invitation to some folks on social media and elsewhere and said, "How about a debate?" And they're like, "Well, we're already debating. Haven't you looked at Facebook?" And I said, "Do respect, that's not a debate." Anyway, long story short, we had a get-together on the 30th of September in my living room. Some of the most passionate folks you could ever meet on both sides of this issue who decided maybe a debate would be interesting. And so for about 30 to 45 minutes, we talked about where might we do it and what date looked best for everybody and facilities. And some of them never done a debate before and they were a little intimidated by, "What does that mean?" And I said, "You know, we're not talking about a real stodgy thing. In fact, a debate coach at the local high school might laugh at us and say, 'Well, that's not how you do a debate,' but I still think it'll be a good job. I think it'll work well." So we kind of even went through a role-play scenario of, "Let's throw out a question and answer and how you might respond and how you might rebut," and so on. And then we threw out the question, "Okay, well, based on that, does everybody still feel like this would be something we want to do?" And the feeling was, "Yeah, we think so, because it's one more opportunity to help inform and educate people." That took us about 30 to 45 minutes and then one of the guys started on something and he looked at me and he said, "We're kind of done, right? Can we just toss out something?" And I said, "Sure." That was about 7:35, 7:45. At 10:00, everybody went home. You want to know what happened over the next little over two hours? And keep in mind, these are passionate people that were there not to have their minds changed. The pro guys were pro and the con guys were con, and guess what happened for over two hours? Questions like, "So why do you feel that way?" "Well, I feel this." "Oh, that's interesting, how about..." And that went on for two hours. And these are people who have already made their minds up passionately, adamantly enough, they're willing to debate. And they sat there in my living room and in essence had their own debate, unmoderated. I kibbitzed in with them a few times and every once in a while, I sat there and chuckled and I said, "That'd be worth debating, wouldn't it?" And the lights were going off, "Wow, we could have recorded this." I said, "Yeah, we could have, but how about let's just do this at the debate? Let's talk about this." Here's the point. Why should we have a debate? Because the purpose of everything that happened thus far was to inform people and we'd like to believe that everybody took all of that in and said, "I'm ready to make a decision." Right? That's the goal. That everybody individually could say, "I've heard everything I need to know, probably three times over, and now I'm ready to make a decision." But here, sitting in my living room, were about 10 people who had been through all of this. They've attended all of these meetings. Some of them were pretty boisterous and outspoken and they sat there for two hours and realized, "Wow, we haven't actually discussed. We've in some cases ranted. We've in some cases tuned people out because they didn't say what I wanted to hear." But here, we actually sat and looked at each other and once we got past the, "Hey, it's nice to meet you face to face," which had never happened before for some of them, including people on the same side of the issue, once we got past the, "Well, I'm for and I'm against", posturing for just a moment, and then it was, "Hey, I'm really glad to meet you." "Well, that's interesting." And we had a really good discussion. That's what's going to happen on the 26th at 7:00 at the Ponderosa Building, Event Center on the fairgrounds, is I think you're going to see a very lively, boisterous debate. It's not going to be a stodgy thing where folks sit there and say, "Well, you know, in my opinion, we really ought to do this because it's pretty cool. Well, I really don't think we should because it'll cost a lot of money." Next question. I guarantee you, it's not going to be like that. I think you're going to see some lively discussion and what I hope is, there are a lot of people out there that'll think, "Well, I've already thought of everything I could have thought of." Keep in mind, these are the folks out there trying to sway people's opinions and they sat there for two hours and realized they hadn't thought of everything there was to thought of, to think of. So if you're sitting out there tonight saying, "Why in the world would I ever go to or watch a debate? I am sick to death, I've heard every discussion." Open your mind just a little wider. You don't have to change your mind, but just open your mind and say, "Maybe there's some things I haven't thought about." You might change your mind, you might not change your mind, that's okay. Each team will be there that night to persuade you why you don't want to or why you do want to pass this bond, because that's the first step along this way. And I think people will be pleased if they hear this discussion. Change your mind, don't change your mind, doesn't matter. We're not trying to take one position or the other, we're trying to present both and a little bit of back and forth. I walked out of that meeting that night saying, "Wow, that was so cool. I wish we could have recorded it." I think this will be a good debate. I hope I'm right. If I'm wrong, we haven't ventured a whole lot. If I'm right, I think the folks there that night, this isn't about me, this is about the folks who will sit there and passionately try to make their case. You haven't wanted to make the case because you respect there are people on both sides and you represent the whole city. The city staff has not wanted to take sides, nor should they, because they're trying to present facts and figures and whatever. The goal of this is to get people thinking and either say, "You know, I never thought about that and I disagree," or, "I never thought about that and I agree. Here's the reason to do something." Think debate is healthy. So, again, 26, 7:00, probably about an hour to an hour and a half. We will ask for questions written from the public. We're not going to get into somebody standing up and giving a 10-minute diatribe under the heading of a question. I'll also post in social media and let folks know how to reach me if you've got things you think ought to be debated. We're trying to let the teams know ahead of time what the questions are because we want them to show up and be prepared. One last time, 26, 7:00 p.m., Ponderosa Building at the fairgrounds.
Great. Appreciate that, Rick. Anyone else like to come up and address? Seeing none? All right. We will then go, there's a agenda request for the food trucks. Those guys can come up now if they would.
City council, mayor. I'm Aaron Stern, this is Derek Brundage. We're here to represent the Downtown Merchants Association and discuss the food truck initiative. Since we last met two weeks ago, we've had several people go out and speak with the downtown food establishments, yeah. Two Jack's Pizza, actually Councilman Gordon spoke with Two Jack's. Lance Wilson spoke with Me Rancherito. And Wendy Osborne spoke with Lucky Five. And we received no negative feedback, in fact, some encouragement that they would invite and welcome the food trucks for one night a week on Main Street.
So, we're here to ask what else we can do. We want to see this happen.
Yes.
Well, I was in a meeting this morning with Dave Anderson and I would put him on the spot and maybe have, see if he would maybe comment on, you've got kind of some consensus from the mayor and the council on which direction we feel like we could go with this? Is that okay for you to comment on?
Yeah, I want to make sure we have that tonight. If you're inclined to pursue the requests that these gentlemen presented, the next best step would be for us to look at amending our ordinance, changing the language that way, which given the fact that these provisions dealing with food trucks are found in Title V, we could have that on your agenda in two weeks, maybe with a few different options for you to consider, if that's what you'd like us to do.
I think so, I believe.
Anybody have any?
Well, maybe to preface that with the public, so the public knows, I mean, there is an ordinance right now, Dave, that basically does allow food trucks to be on private property, right? Private property only. And from a perspective of not being on the council four years ago when this came up, but from the chambers' perspective, it's hard to go back, for me even, a couple of weeks and remember what I did, but even four years ago, to talk about what happened, what was happening with the food trucks, right? And what's happened from then until today, as far as how organized they are, at least in the valley of, you know, organizing roundups and things like that. I think your petition definitely has merit to talk about getting out of the same ordinance that was passed to basically try to protect those business owners and talk about, "Hey, we don't want to compete with those business owners." But you guys and your coalition doing the legwork of speaking to those business owners and working with the chamber and talking about those concerns and really that game-changing of some of those business owners saying, "You know what? The data shows that it actually helps businesses downtown, whether it be food businesses or clothing businesses or whatever it is. More people downtown attracted to these food trucks ends up helping business on Main Street." So I appreciate you guys doing that legwork, organically coming up with a, you know, somewhat of a proposal here. And just from this rookie councilman's perspective, I think it's a good direction to go and it shows you that things can change, you know, over time. I mean, four years isn't that long, but boy, it's changed to where what we were really worried about might be a really beneficial thing to our Main Street business owners. So, and you guys be invested in that, so we appreciate that.
Great, so we'll have Dave and staff review that, come back to us, let us, so we can move forward with that.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming and doing the legwork on that.
Thanks, Aaron.
Okay. Let's move on to Dave Anderson.
My pleasure.
Wait, wait, we're not ready for you.
Oh, council, sorry.
That's okay. I just thought maybe you had something else to add to the food truck. So, he's anxious for you. He's really anxious to get you up here. We're going to go to council comments now. Councilman Scobes, let's start with you tonight.
All right. Mayor, just a couple of things to report. The airport board, our meeting was postponed till November because of a conflict that members of the airport committee had with a convention of airports. And so that meeting is postponed, that'll happen first Wednesday in November. The Veterans Council will meet on tomorrow, in fact, we'll meet tomorrow and I'll have a report from that meeting. And then the last thing just to report on, and others may touch on it as well, but kind of in the vein of veterans, is the council, the mayor and council, we had the opportunity to visit with the 116th Engineers, one of their companies before they deployed to the Middle East on Sunday. Had the opportunity to go through and visit with the soldiers down there, their company commander, their first sergeant, some of their battalion and brigade leadership, and meet with them while they were going through their SRP, which really is where they go and finalize their paperwork, insurance documents, power of attorney, things like that, that the soldiers need to make sure are in line and in check before they leave their families and loved ones. And it was a great opportunity for the mayor and council, for us to be able to go down, show our support to those soldiers that are leaving from our armory here in Spanish Fork. Having done that twice myself to both Iraq and Afghanistan, I can tell you, from a soldier's perspective, it's wonderful to be able to have the community support, to know that the mayor and the council were there to talk with those soldiers, to shake their hands. And really, there are a few communities like that in the country, certainly several in our state, but it was a great opportunity on behalf of the 116th, though I'm not a member of them, I am a member of the Utah National Guard. I extend a thank you to the mayor and council for going down there. I'm very grateful I was able to go with you gentlemen and I know that the soldiers appreciated our visit. And for those at home watching, we've got a unit from Spanish Fork that is deployed to the Middle East, they're in training right now, and within a period of time will be leaving our country to go to the Middle East once they finish their training. They will do great things. Many people ask what community they're from because when you serve on active duty as a guardsman, they always want to know where you're from and without hesitation, they'll say they're from Utah. And what a great honor that is to be able to represent the state, be able to represent our country. And for many of the soldiers in that unit, to be able to represent our community. So just keep in mind that despite the operational tempo and how things are changing, there are still units from Utah and more specifically, a unit from Spanish Fork that is preparing to go in harm's way to defend our freedoms. They're doing a great job, they will represent us and our state well. And as you see, their family members just kind of keep a, you know, keep a soft shoulder for them. They've got the hardest job, the families at home, and, you know, just kind of keep that in mind. We live in a great, a great area. So just like to report on that and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Councilman Dart.
Hey, I went to a library board meeting the other night and the fall reading programs have begun and there's too many here to even mention. There's a little pamphlet here, pick up the library, I suppose. But the library is going great guns and if you have, well, any age, there's programs here for any age, from toddlers clear up to adults. So check the library out and get involved with the reading programs that they have. They do a, they have a great service for our community. And I'd just like to echo what Councilman Scobes talked about. Quite touching to go down to the armory and see those men and women prepare to leave. It's a great experience. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, first I guess I want to say, echo what these two have said as I sat there with these 160 military personnel, women and men. I felt just a small portion of what they must be feeling like to have to leave their families behind. And I'm so grateful for their service, grateful for what they do to serve our country. And I pray that their families watched over while they're gone and that we will all be good neighbors and citizens to them while they're gone too. So I just echo that. It was just quite a heavy-hearted feeling to be in that room and know that they were all leaving in a few days. So we had, as I mentioned earlier, when Aaron and Derek were up here talking about the food truck, we'd met this morning and just want to let you know all of the work that's going on with the initiative to keep downtown vibrant and exciting. And I just appreciate all the work from staff, Dave Anderson and his staff, and these business owners that are taking time and effort to think of ideas to help our downtown stay vibrant and do things to keep people coming down and recognizing that our Main Street is right here and not Highway 6. And like some people, you know, they don't realize that we have a downtown right here and I think it's very important. I appreciate all the efforts that are going into events like this. And so I also wanted to mention that I believe it was about a month ago, our little friend, was his name Travis? Chief?
Wesley Berger.
Wesley Berger, okay. Travis is his dad, maybe, right? Wesley Berger is the young man who had visited every police station from here all the way down to California, right? And he's doing an event Saturday at Stokes in Salem called Dogs for Dogs and where he helps fundraise and make money for police officers to have dogs and the equipment that it takes and bring awareness to our police community and thanking them. So if you have a chance, go down to Stokes Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, they'll be raffling off muzzle loaders and lots of great, great things that I noticed. And so that'd be a great thing. Next week, Thursday, the 15th, we have a fire prevention course and open house at the fire station from 6:00 to 8:00. And so if you're able to attend that, that would be, that would be much appreciated. And that is all I have for now, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Davis.
I just want to echo again what Councilman Scobes said about the 116th. It was an honor to be down there with these great and wonderful men that are going to serve our country and protect us. Their equipment had already been shipped out on barges back to the Middle East. I feel for them, I feel for their families. You could really see that it was a tender moment for them. And then you seen them on TV Sunday night with their families and it was pretty tough to watch. But I'm thankful and grateful for these great, wonderful soldiers that are there to protect our country and to protect us, give us our freedoms that we have here in this great and wonderful city. Which brings me up to what I want to talk about a little bit. As you know, me and Rod, we are lame ducks. I can probably count on one hand how many more meetings I truly have to serve in this city. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about some of our departments through the next few weeks. And the department I want to talk about today will be our engineering department and our infrastructures. I talked to Chris a little bit today and wanted to thank him for all his service and the job he is doing for our city, but also the great man that served with him. Want to talk about the street department a little bit with Jamie and Rick and Eric and the wonderful jobs that they truly are doing with our streets. I mean, they have touched every one of our streets now in the last four or five years and they continue to improve them and make them better and better. Cities all around the state are coming to ask and asking us how we're doing it, you know, and they want to know what we're doing because they know we're doing it right. The UAPA, the Utah Asphalt and Paving Association are coming to ask and asking us how we do it. I mean, that's pretty marvelous to have a company like that. Brandon probably knows about those guys. Want to know how we're doing it, but the dedication these guys are doing to make our city so wonderful. Our stormwater, our LIDs, you know, it's new and it's wonderful and it's working and we're using them in our new subdivisions, you know, and EPA loves it. And we're talking about an area down there by my place that, put one end, that I think will work. You know, we've had a problem there and I think an LID will work there. So I think in January, February, they're going to talk about that and hopefully next summer, I hope that works. Jared and Corey's been working on the plans with that, you know, in our engineering department and Travis Warren and Sean H. are, you know, doing the plans and mapping on it and doing a great job, you know, working that way. Our water department with John and Brian and Paul, you know, I'm so thankful for our forefathers that look to the future for our water. You've seen how other cities have been having to put restrictions on the water this year. Spanish Fork didn't have to. We asked, you know, that we conserve our water and do the best we can, but because of our water rights and our wells and our things that we have, we are prepared and we have that water and we can grow and not worry about it, you know, as long as we conserve. And I hope we have a good winter this year. But these guys just work so hard to maintain it and the programs that they have and we are just truly well-maintained in our city with our water. And I'm thankful for that. Isn't that great that we have that wonderful resource? Our electrical department with Kelly, he's probably one of the best supervisors in the state. You can't ask for anything better than Kelly and his men that work for him. You can't ask for anything better than Kelly, and his men that work for him, they're great and awesome. And the jobs that they do, our maintenance and cost per customer has gone down through the years. It hasn't gone up, it's gone down. Steve can probably talk about that. You know, our cost with our electrical's gone up, but it's because of our power sources and buying it. But our maintenance per customer has gone down. Our, when we have a downtime, you know, an outage, we don't have that very much anymore, but when we do, it doesn't last very long because of the dedication and experience and the training that our people have in our electrical department. It doesn't last very long, and it doesn't matter how the weather is, whether it's night or day, and Rod can verify this, they're there and they're working hard, and they're just dedicated, and they lead their families, and they're in harm's way too. That's a pretty dangerous job, but yet there they are to serve the people, serve the community. I am just, I'm just so thankful for these wonderful men and women that work for Spanish Fork and makes Spanish Fork what it truly is. It's been great to grow up in Spanish Fork and to be part of it. And I just owe it to my mentors and my forefathers that lived here. And I look up to them and hope that, you know, as serving in the city council, that I've done something to help the city. Anyway, that's what I want to talk about was our infrastructures today and our engineering department. But thanks, Chris. You've got great people that work underneath you and continue to tell them how much we love them and appreciate all that they do. The other thing I want to say is, get out and vote. You know, if you're not registered, you need to get out and register. We've got some important issues coming up in the 1st of November. You've got three city council positions that are going to open up, you know. You need to get registered, and you need to look at the, look at their records and see how they are and vote for the person that you feel is going to be the best, that's going to help serve, not lead, serve this community. And we've got some other issues that are coming up that are very, very important. And so you need to, again, go out and get ready to vote. Register, if you're not registered, get out and register, and then go to the polls and make sure that you use your God-given right as an American to cast your vote and do it the right way. Mayor?
Thanks. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to echo a little bit of what's been said before, the last couple of years has been interesting at times, serving on the city council, and been tough sometimes and great at other times. And one of the great times was to go down and meet the members of the 116th last week. Emotional for me a little bit, so I had to lean on Councilman Scopes a little bit and ask him what was going on. He was good to let us know what was happening and formations and leaders of this unit and everything else and what they were doing. But I was, just like what's been said before, shocked to go shake hands with men and women. Some now 10 years or more younger than I am, and some appeared to be 30 or 40 years older than I was. But men and women that, when I shook their hand and tried to say thank you to them for some small token from the city, you know, to say thank you for your service and good luck and God bless, before I could get that out, they tell me thank you. That's the type of character you're dealing with, with that group of individuals. And, and when that happened, it started to take me off guard until I started to expect it, you know, about 15 or 20 guys in, and every single one of them were thank you, sir, thank you for your service, and we'll do our best, and we'll see you soon. And so a lot of times, it was, it was hard to get out any words to these, to these individuals. So just so we all know, as citizens of Spanish Fork, 20 of our residents in Spanish Fork leave with the 116th. It sounds like more are going to go at a later date too. But just remember that as you interact with your neighbors and anybody in town, that there are families that sacrifice much more than I do and much more than a lot of people do in allowing their loved ones to go serve our country and protect our freedoms. And they're above, above board and very impressed by all those individuals that I had the opportunity to meet, and hope to see them again in a year. We got the opportunity a couple of weeks ago now to attend a Utah League of Cities conference. That's a training, an annual training that they hold up in Salt Lake for the staff and also for, for the city council and mayor, and we had the opportunity to go up there and hear some great presentations, hear some great speakers. The only one I fell asleep in was Seth's presentation. I didn't fall asleep in Seth's presentation. That's true. I was taking pictures. I was tagging Seth. It was a great conference. Those conferences happen every year, and the couple that I've been to so far, there's an annual one and a semi-annual one, provide us a lot of opportunity to, to, to train our skills. Some classes are, you know, juniors' favorites for me of how to not get the city in legal trouble and different things, but a lot of good information from the cities and towns that are all over the state of Utah that have done things that maybe the city's looking to do, or maybe they're looking to do things that we've already done. And so it's a lot of good information to share back and forth from elected officials and from, from, from the appointed folks at the city. I can tell you what I did come away with more than anything is, once again, like Richard mentioned, our city is run by some of the best and brightest people in the state of Utah, hands down. If anybody disagrees with that statement, I would implore you to find out where it comes from. Those people up there, the city managers, the Parks and Rec people, everybody else, the attorneys, everybody else that are from different cities up there, when they meet me and they don't know me from Adam, they probably think I'm there to serve the food for a little while, but, but then when they find out I'm from Spanish Fork, they bring up the names that kind of go down in somewhat of city history of Spanish Fork and how well the city's run. And they know them, they know, they know these people, they rely on these people. They rely on our past elected officials as well. Your city is run conservatively, it's run above board, it is run transparently. And the, some of the best confirmation I have of that is when I get the chance to talk to other city leaders in the, in this Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. So I appreciated all the instruction, but most of all appreciated the confirmation from people when they come up to me and let me know that the Spanish Fork is a place that things are happening, and they're happening right.
Let me interrupt you right now, and I'll just take a second, then you can continue on.
Okay.
I just want everybody to know that Mike was elected to one of the board of directors of the League of Cities up there this last time. So great honor for Spanish Fork, great honor for Mike. He deserved it, and they had a vote, and he's on the board of directors of the Utah League of Cities now. And so he's doing a great job, and I'll let you carry on from there.
Thanks, Mayor. It's good to try to embarrass people as much as you can. I appreciate another point of what's been said about the Downtown Merchant Association and what Brandon alluded to of the Chamber and their work, and also this organic effort to try to help our downtown businesses. The study conducted by the APA team that was put into motion by Commissioner Bruce Fallon and Dave's office to get those people here and study those, those needs of our city. And it's neat to see some of those things come to fruition, some of those balls starting to get in motion of helping our downtown. I want to take just a second to piggyback on what Richard said as well of election season now upon us. You see signs, campaign signs, initiative signs, bond signs up all over our city now. And if you don't see them in our city, as soon as you get to the next city, you see them for that city. And so for the next, what, 25 days or so until Election Day, those just get more and more prevalent. The, I'd echo what Richard said, that to get out and vote is so important and kind of goes along with, you know, the option or the opportunity to see the 116th get ready to serve around the world is that that opportunity that they protect is the opportunity of freedom, the opportunity to, to vote your conscience. So please, while you do that, make sure we're respecting people's property. Those signs aren't free, so make sure they're not, you know, vandalized in any way. If I'm going to vandalize a sign, it'll be Brandon's in my yard, and it'll be some picture of him in the corner. But make sure, please respect people's private property. I wanted to mention real quick regarding the Life Center, I appreciate Rick's comments on the upcoming debate that's scheduled for later this month. And the two words that I key on there are to inform and educate people. I think that's the key point of the bond initiative, not only the seats that are up for election, but also the bond initiative of the Life Center that's going to be in front of the citizens this year. Get informed and get educated about the facts of this bond. One instance just happened last night of a neighbor of mine that I count him much more intelligent than myself, much more informed than myself. I'm a small community banker here that works in Spanish Fork and tries to just make relatively small financial decisions as far as deals go for businesses. This is a gentleman that works up in downtown Salt Lake for a large institution. And when I talk about lending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, his deals end up in the hundreds of millions of dollars for companies all over the nation. And so I always look at this guy as my neighbor and think, yeah, you, you know what you're doing. Sometimes I had to talk to you about, you know, how to get this, you know, how to decide one way or the other. But last night, at 8:30, he's on my front porch, and he says to me, hey, just, you know, want to get an update on how things are going in the city? He's always that way with me, and what's coming up? And he says, I said, you know, we got a lot of things coming up. We're going to have city council tomorrow night, but, you know, the big thing is the, is the bond initiative that's on the ballot, and there's three city council seats up as well. And he says, yeah, I saw that, and I saw a sign yesterday that you want to charge me 166% of my property tax to build a facility. And I said, yes, that's, that's right. What does that mean to you? And he said, well, my bill is $1,600, $1,632 or something a year for my property that's around the corner from where I live. And, and I said, so, so what do you think that's going up to? He says, well, 166% of that is a whole lot of money. That's in the $3,000 range. Now, again, this is a guy that does a lot bigger numbers in math than I do at my banking job. And I said, so do you, that's what you think, is your bills going up to the $3,000 range in a property tax bill? And he says, well, that's, that's why I'm asking you. It's why I'm on your doorstep. So I just want to let people know, whatever way you feel about the bond initiative is perfectly fine. And I think that is, the net result of whatever way this bond initiative goes is fantastic because the net result is you're getting people involved in a process and in a city government process. And I think that's fantastic. I think the tragedy, and what I told him, I said, the tragedy would be that if someone doesn't find that out before Election Day, which has happened in other cities that have attempted a similar bond initiative for rec centers or for libraries or for, and for fire stations, for public safety buildings, is that if you went into, because he was prepared to basically say, that's too much money. That's a lot of money in a year for my family. 166% is on 9% of your tax bill. Now, that needs to be said publicly, I think, as much as anything, that the bond proposition and the numbers have been, went over a lot of time in city meetings. They're going to continue to be gone over in a debate, in other city meetings, and in your neighborhood discussions, they're going to go on. But here is a guy that I take is 10 times smarter than myself that was misinformed until yesterday, that 166% proposed tax increase was on his whole bill, not 9% of his tax bill, the city's portion of your bill. So remember, that's the proposal that's at hand. The average home is about $200 in taxes that come to the city. The proposed increase would take it up to about $320, about $120 from, from, from that number, not 1,600, 1,500, up to $3,000. Just remember that as we start talking about the bond initiative. And again, get informed, just like Rick said, get informed, get educated, and vote your conscience. Be respectful of other people's decisions, of other people's opinions as well, but make sure you're informed of the facts on both sides before you, before you step into the polls on November 3rd.
Hey, Mike, I think you said that backwards. Just to make sure you're clarified on the record. Seth, do you want to help us on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Dale will talk about this briefly, but since people are watching at the moment, I think that's helpful. The tax increase, what Brandon's saying, you said the number was backwards. The average increase is $200, and it'll go from 120 up to 367. He had all three numbers right, they were just in the wrong order.
Just in the wrong order, just want to clarify that.
Listen, Brandon, I can't get everything right in...
In three months, you won't be the rookie anymore.
Yeah, thank you.
Good enough.
No. With that, Mayor, maybe to speak a little bit about water is what Richard talked about too. The, talking about the opportunity of Chris's department and taking so good care of us recently in the, in the recent years of city leadership and, and staff leadership of, of making it right when things need to be right, of planning for the future. You know, I want to let people know that, that the city has, again, the city has a track record of planning well for the future. They have a recent track record of making sure we have enough water, not only making sure we have enough water, but making sure we have a secondary irrigation system that's metered, that, there was a lot of discussion about that when it happened of how that was wrong and how it was too costly to do. The facts prove out that that's a $15 million savings or better for the city in water costs. That saves our citizens a lot of money for our, our past leaders and our staff to be forward-thinking on that front. But you can even take that water back to a, to a much more basic level and a generation back to where the farmers that settled here in Spanish Fork decided that the only way to get water to our valley was to be invested in a project. So you start to talk about how people, you know, invest today for future generations, the, some point that's forgotten, and it would be forgotten by me because I wasn't around then unless somebody told me, and I happen to have a family that's pretty involved in water. But you talk about Lake Shore, Palmyra, and Benjamin in Spanish Fork, that, that farmers mortgaged their farms to get water to our valley. That's how we live today as far as being able to grow, being able to prosper, being able to, to manage that growth, is, is farmers of a certain day, generations ago, seeing the future and saying, if, if, if we're going to grow here, if our kids are going to live here and our kids' kids are going to live here, then we're going to need to have water delivered from elsewhere. And that costs money to do. Those brave people have mortgaged their farms to do that for future generations. So when water's discussed, I like to take it back to not only the recent levels of success that we've had, but also the generations ago that made all this possible to even... success that we've had, but also the generations ago that made all this possible to even talk about living here in a desert. So, that was a long time, Mayor, I apologize, you didn't plan on me going that long, I'm sure, but...
You done?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done, but I'm not done yet, because I'm passing it off to Director Clark, Charis, and President Stacy Beck to give us the chamber.
We might have to pass an ordinance, put a timer up here for the council.
You could do that.
I would like to quickly thank you this. We will be quick. We want to, first of all, thank the city for their new community partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, that was just renewed. So, thank you. And we want to announce trick-or-treating on Main Street in Spanish Fork, the 31st. That'll be between Center Street and Fourth North from 1 to 3. And then Salem's will be the same time, so they will both be happening at the same time from 1 to 3. And Salem's will be in the Zoo Wire Fitness parking lot there. Kind of more of a trunk-or-treat. So those are my two things.
Okay. And you've seen scarecrows popping up along Main Street, so it's that time of season. One, I would like to say as well, thank you for the city renewing its community partnership, and had a great meeting with Dave and Seth on that, and just wanna tell you thank you. We did have a ribbon cutting today that took place actually in Springville. We have an energy that seems to be kind of emulating from Spanish Fork, and we're getting phone calls all the time from outside the city. We actually have membership from Provo through to Santaquin, and that's something that's exciting. Our newest members are a little place called Key Land and Title. There is a Nick and Kyle Dart that are opening that along with Matt Barber, and their ribbon cutting, actually, if you would like to come, will be this Friday at 11:30. They are going to have it catered by Madera, who I've met with, and they are intending to join the chamber as well. And you will be amazed when you get inside that old restaurant, not old restaurant building, but Magelbees, and see what they have done. And those two gentlemen are actually the gentlemen who helped start Zupas. And so we're excited about that. Chick-fil-A has joined and had a great meeting with the barber, or not the barbers, I'm thinking of who my grandfather sold his auto license to, but with the Smith family, with Spence and Tom, and actually their father Doug. Their official grand opening will be October 29th, and it will probably be sometime between 11:30 through 2:30, and there will be a ribbon cutting. They will be joining the chamber on their behalf, and just an incredible family. And coming from an old family of car dealers, it was a lot of fun to walk into the dealership. One thing I will let you know and tell you, tell Steve Money and Dale Thank You on, we have a chamber member, Charis Ranch, that is managing a sale. There are 620 rams at the fairgrounds right now of all breeds. It is in its almost 80th year. Spanish Fork is still one of the major agricultural centers of this Intermountain West, and there are people who are coming from throughout the United States who are going to bid on those rams on Thursday. My father is the manager, has been for almost 40 years, but we should be incredibly proud of the kind of cornucopia of agriculture that we still are. And even the Smiths commented on it, that it's been slow this week, because they figure everybody in Spanish Fork owns a farm, and they're all out harvesting, and nobody's buying cars, so please go buy cars for them. But we are excited as a chamber, literally getting phone calls every day. There's an excitement in this community, and I'm very proud to be part of it. On Thursday night, we'd like to invite everyone to the Senior Citizens Center. There will be a meet the candidate at night with four tremendous candidates for council, and it will be moderated by Jim Griffin, who teaches government at Salem Hills High School and a former Payson City Councilman, and we're very pleased about that. And it will be more a moderated, rather than a debate-type format, and it will go from 7 to 8, and it will be televised on SFN 17. But four tremendous candidates, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chamber. Okay, I'll make mine real short, because Richard and Mike, they decided to take the whole meeting to Hachar. I forgive you. The National Guard, a lot's been said about that. Two weeks ago, when the two commanders came into my office here in the city office and wanted to meet with me and told me that they were gonna be deployed, you know, it was kind of a shock to me, because you don't hear too often that your National Guard gets deployed. And so, you know, the first thing I asked him was, what can I do? What can we do as a city? And he says, we just appreciate your support. And he said, we're gonna have a little meeting before we leave, we'd be honored if you'd come down and say a few words. And I'll tell you, not only being down there and seeing all those young men and women getting ready to be deployed, I was really proud of that, but I was so proud that every one of my City Council members were there, representing. And that's just the tremendous individuals we have sitting up here, and I just wanna tell each of them thank you, because it meant a lot to those soldiers, to have those guys go around and shake their hands and wish them good luck and thank them for their service. And it's like Mike said, each one of them, before we could say thank you, they were, thank you for coming, thank you for seeing us off, you know. And so, it's a neat thing, and we appreciate those people that provide the opportunity that us citizens can hear and be free and do the things that we do here in the city. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, I wanna mention the farmer's market. I've been down there every Saturday, and I'll tell you what, it seems like it gets more and more and more people there. It's a neat thing that we have going here. So if you haven't been down to the farmer's market, get down there, because I'll tell you what, they have some great produce and it helps support those farmers. Okay, now, that being said, Dave, you know, it's been about an hour ago you tried to get up, you'd like to try it again?
I'd love to.
All right.
It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Smoot. You might wanna just give me a minute here.
Okay.
I'll go through the full introduction, but it's great to be able to welcome Steve Smoot tonight. The facility that he'll discuss that's being planned now represents, I think, one of the great milestones that our community will enjoy. And like I said, it's very exciting to think about and to talk about. That being said, Steve Smoot is the Regional Vice President and CEO of Intermountain Healthcare's South Region and the CEO of Utah Valley Regional Medical Center in Provo. Steve is accountable for the operations and performance of Intermountain's seven hospitals and clinics in central Utah that are supported by the region's 5,500 employees and more than 1,000 physicians. Steve's career in healthcare leadership began 20 years ago, as he led significant change within three different hospitals, excuse me, hospital systems in Ohio, Kentucky, and Montana. Taking the experience he gained working in both the for-profit and not-for-profit hospital settings, Steve joined Intermountain Healthcare in 2000 as the administrator of Valley View Medical Center in Cedar City. Steve became the administrator for Utah Valley Regional in 2007, and was named the Regional Vice President of the South Region in 2012. Steve has worked effectively to direct the hospital's efforts to provide care for more than 400,000 patients annually. His ability to engage physicians to drive needed change has led to the highest physician satisfaction ratings among Intermountain's hospitals. Additionally, Steve's devotion to excellent patient care and customer service, excuse me, customer satisfaction, has driven results that are found only among the nation's best-performing hospitals. Steve is currently leading a $430 million project to replace large portions of Utah Valley Regional's aging campus. Steve has a bachelor's degree in healthcare administration from Weber State University and an MBA from Brigham Young University. He is a fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives and provides leadership as a board member of the Utah Hospital Association and past chair of the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce. He is passionate about healthcare and enjoys the challenge associated with maintaining high-quality patient care in an intensely regulated and rapidly changing industry. Steve's sense of adventure is fueled by his love for mountain biking, running, and mountain climbing, which include climbs to the summits of Mount Rainier, the Grand Teton, and the 18,500-foot Pico de Orizaba in Mexico. A native of Orem, Steve and his wife have five beautiful daughters. And as I said, it's my pleasure to welcome Steve to Spanish Fork tonight. We certainly appreciate him joining us, and I'll turn things over to Mr. Smoot.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The bio sounded like a good idea, tell you, I have to hear somebody read it. Before I get into my presentation, let me just tell you how much I enjoy being here tonight. This is one of the joys I have in my job, and I've spent much of my career in communities this size or smaller, and worked with a lot of city councils, and I can tell what I know about Spanish Fork is confirmed tonight as I see the amazing city council that's sitting in front of me. I grew up in Utah County in Orem and heard lots of great things about Spanish Fork, knew it was a good place to live, but then I had the opportunity in Cedar City to hire a young man, I've mentioned this to a handful of you, Steve Wilson's son, Jason Wilson, who some of you should know, and all of you should appreciate the fact, you should be very proud of Jason. He came out top of his class at BYU, went to one of the premier hospital administration master's programs in the country, and got a coveted fellowship program at Intermountain, and I was lucky enough to steal him away and come work for me. But he could not stop talking about Spanish Fork City. In fact, to the point that I said, you gotta stop, this is getting a little bit obnoxious, even though he's living in Cedar City. And it wasn't until I came up into the county that I realized he probably didn't say enough, because this is one amazing part of the state, and we're excited to be here with you tonight and talk about it. I wanna preface this presentation, I think most of you know the origins of Intermountain Healthcare. We were originally, our main hospitals were originally owned by the LDS Church, and like they have with many of their organizations, in the 1970s realized that that was not core to their mission, since they were a worldwide organization, and so they divested of those hospitals. They had the opportunity to sell them to HCA at the time, which was up and coming, or to gift them to the communities. And after consulting with a lot of experts, they decided to make this as a gift to the communities. Put a board of folks together, went out and hired the first executives, Dave Jepson and Scott Parker, Scott Parker being the CEO, and then gave him the challenge that we want you to make this a model healthcare system. And I have to tell you, if you pause and think about that, in 1970, in the middle of Utah, when you had places like Harvard and Stanford and Mayo Clinic and MD Anderson and these places out there to ask Intermountain Healthcare to become a model healthcare system, and where it was at the time, that was a long ways to go. And we've delivered on that, in our opinion. If you watched the presidential debate, in the last debate, and this is nice, because I don't have to say Democrat or Republican, because both Governor Romney and President Obama said that if the country's healthcare system were run like Intermountain Healthcare, we wouldn't have a Medicare cost crisis in the country, and stated us as a model for how care should be delivered. So, we need to continue to do that as we go forward. We never feel like we've arrived, just like you know you haven't as a city. So, we're excited to be here and be a part of your community. One final comment, we are governed by a board of individuals who volunteer their time, and that board owns the final decision of what happens with any of our large projects. And that's a board that's in Salt Lake City. I also have a local board, which I'll talk about, but the board in Salt Lake City owns these decisions. And so I say that tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about plans that I'm putting together, but we reserve the right for that board to make the final decision. So there's not a final decision, there's approval for me to be to the stage that I am and where we're headed, but a final decision will get made pretty close to when we actually break ground. So as long as you'll all appreciate that as I make the presentation, we can talk about it. Fair enough, and I shared that with the mayor as well, so I just always have to put that caveat out. Quick introduction of who, I think this is working. Here you go. Okay, quick introduction. So we're 22 hospitals organized in four regions. I'm gonna talk about our regions, or our region here, and you heard about that, we have the three hospitals here in Utah County and four in central Utah, to count Delta and Fullmore together. And this is our mission, and I talked about that we're a not-for-profit organization, which really means we do not have shareholders. We are owned by the community. All of you are the shareholders of Intermountain Healthcare. Many of you work for businesses or own businesses of your own that know that what you want is high-quality care, but you need it at the lowest appropriate cost, and that is really one of our missions. And we realize the way we deliver on that best is we need to keep you healthy and keep you out of the hospital. We'd love to put ourselves out of business. If you do come, then we wanna provide the highest level of care, but we'd prefer you don't have to come, or that your family doesn't have to come. In that spirit, we shifted our mission to this a year ago, helping people live the healthiest lives possible, and you'll see that be a significant focus of our system over the coming years. Let's talk about Utah County in particular. We've got some great facilities here, we've grown one more facility just within the last year, and this is the IASIS Hospital up here in Lehigh at the point of the mountain. We have our hospital here in American Fork, a small campus in Orem, our big campus at Utah Valley, and then of course, we have Mountain View Hospital that all of you are well aware of, and Tempanogus Hospital there in Orem as well, that are both a part of the Mountain Star system. Our strategy, which you'll see play out as I discuss with you what we're going to do, is what we call a hub-and-spoke model. It doesn't make sense to have the very high-end services in every community, and I don't think you'd want us to. So if you needed to have open-heart surgery or neurosurgery for a brain tumor, you wanna know that that surgeon and that team has done enough cases on a regular basis that you're gonna get good care. And so to provide that, what we do is set up a tertiary campus in the center of the counties. You'll notice Intermountain Medical Center at 53rd South, McAdie Hospital in the middle of that Ogden area, and for here, it's Utah Valley. What you'll also notice, though, is a big gap down here in the southern end of the county if we follow that hub-and-spoke model. I wanted to touch just briefly on what we're doing at Utah Valley, because it does impact Spanish Fork and will impact your citizens. I know that's not what we're here to talk about, but it's a big part of what's going on in our lives today. This is a campus that's been here for 75 years. We just celebrated our 75th anniversary, and we've stayed in the same location. You may remember historically, that was the main highway. If you wanted to go to California, you came right past Utah Valley. We're not there anymore. We had discussions about moving the campus, but for a lot of reasons, realized it was best to stay right there. We'll talk about the Spanish Fork site as I talk about that location to I-15. This is just a layout, this is State Street or Fifth West, Bulldog on the north end of the site here, and we purchased a bunch of land to the south here because we were short on property. We had landlocked ourselves. I must have sent in the right spot. Okay. This is the original portion of the campus that will stay. Our tower basically stands right here. These two new buildings will come online over the next two years. This building will open up, two and a half now, this will open up in 2018, and will be the main portion of the hospital, and then we'll come back and retrofit the rest of the campus here. Another view of it, if you're coming up from the south, if you were to get off of Center Street and come towards our campus, which your ambulance has come this way, that's the view that you would have. And actually move the ER closer to the south end of the county, because they'll come in on that end, so it'll make it a quicker trip if you're coming. So why are we talking about a Spanish Fork facility or a presence here in the south end of the county? I'm gonna share information I know you know, but I wanna share what we've been studying as we talk about this, and that is, almost one out of every Fork County resident lives in Springville South, and then the South County's had huge growth. And then I'll add to that, I live in the north end of the county in Highland, and so as I go to Salt Lake for meetings a lot, I'm driving through that Lehigh area, it's amazing what's happening. And it is obvious to all of us that the epicenter of Utah will be the northern part of Utah County, which will only strengthen the rest of this county. And it's easy to see why the governor's predicted and why you guys are gonna explode with growth, and we can all see that, and it's pretty exciting. Affordable housing and a good community living's gonna be down in this part of the community, the place where you'd want in this part of the community, the place where you'd want to live in Utah County. And this just shows what's going to happen here in the south end of the county. We're sitting right here at 2015, and again, we do Springville South when we look at this Provo-Orem area here in the middle and then Lehigh, or Lyndon North out here. And easily, you guys are going to catch up and be the largest part of the county over the life of our presence here in Utah County, here in Spanish Fork. Just another look at what's actually happened and what we predict happening from 2015 to 2030, the net add of residents. I'm assuming this matches data that you all look at as well, but significant growth in this part of the county. Another piece that's important to us is one of our strategies to successfully deliver on cost-effective care is we own an insurance product as well, Select Health. And if you just look at the presence of those who have Select Health Insurance, we have a large portion of our Select Health members. Some of those are my own employees or employees of other large businesses. NIBO School District's come and gone from that, and I appreciate why it's hard for them to stay because we don't have any facilities here to take care of those services. So if you, before we opened our Instacare and Pace, and if you needed even a simple x-ray and you had our insurance and you lived anywhere south of Provo, you had to drive all the way into downtown Provo to get that care. Not fair to patients, and we understand that. So that big market share is a driver for us as well as we look at the insurance presence here. And actually, I will tell you, a little bit surprised at the size of that market share without facilities down here. So here's the land that we purchased, and I talked about that, and I know many of you know the history. We bought this some time ago prior to the collapse of the economy in '08, and Intermountain Healthcare, like all businesses, retrenched, slowed down, looked at how we wanted to do things. We're a very conservative organization, probably because of the origins of the LDS Church. So we want to make sure that we're careful when we build, and so we paused during that period of time. But because of that, and the mayor, I think it was the mayor ahead of you, and I can't remember his name, and I apologize.
Anderson.
Mary Anderson came to us and expressed concern about the fact that we were tying up some prime land here, good frontage property, and said, "Boy, when are you guys coming? We'd love to have that hospital there, but if not, we have other uses or would like to see other things go in there." And so it actually worked out for us. Our desire isn't necessarily to be right there with retail visibility. What we need is easy access for ambulance traffic and for patients, and want that to be quickly accessible off of I-15, which is why it was an easy thing for us to work with the city and purchase this property, whoops, sorry, this property right here that's just behind that. So you can see that we finalized that. We own that property, and I'll talk about where we're headed as we go forward. One of the triggers of a hospital going forward actually has a lot to do with births. And it's just a measure that we use. It's one of many metrics. And we want a certain number of births so that we can justify, again, creating a safe environment for patients if they come in to deliver. So this will just show you a unique, kind of a unique graph. Each one of those dots is a baby that was delivered over that period of time that we're looking. And you can see south Utah County. Brandon, did you contribute to that?
Thank you.
Big time.
A couple times.
Our predictions are, our predictions are that, you know, this right here, that there's a BYU-UBU effect that goes on right there. But if you look at this up here, pretty easy to say over the next five or 10 years, that's what it's going to look like down in the south end of the county. And so we want to be here and be able to provide those services for those patients. Right now, even though the stats show it a little less, we see that growing. So we've targeted kind of a magical number of when we think the deliveries are going to be where we need them to be. And you all may be aware, the change in the age of the mission age not only impacted marriages, but it impacted births as well. There was a delay effect. We think within the next year, because I don't know if you've noticed, this summer, everybody got married, so we're predicting in the next year, we're going to have a baby boom in Utah County. So, but all that, we believe by 2020 is the right year for us to have a facility that can take care of those delivers, which means we'd break ground sometime around 2018. So some key things as we plan this facility, and that is, even though healthcare is kind of a funny market, we have a lot of competitors that we also cooperate with. Look at the capital required to do some of what we do. It would not be good for a community if you got into a big all-out war, and there's markets around the country that do that. Luckily, the state of Utah is not a culture where that happens. So one of the things we've looked at in the timing of this campus as well is we view Mountain View Hospital as a good partner in delivering care in this end of the county, and we do not want to hurt them as we open our facility. And so we've tried to time it appropriately that the market has matured enough that another hospital can come here without impacting Spanish Fork. Since then, as we've worked with Mountain View and others without, we have to be careful, obviously, for legal reasons, how much we can talk, but some of the things that they've realized is the ability to have specialists that want to live and practice only in south Utah County. So north Utah County enjoys orthopedic surgeons, general surgeons, cardiologists even, that only live and practice up in the north end of the county, and they don't come to Utah Valley. What happens down here is most of your physicians that practice at Mountain View Hospital come to Utah Valley as well, and so end up, a lot of them end up living up there. Our hope is as we bring this campus, the way insurance is split with Mountain View and Spanish Fork together, and then Intermountain Facilities one and IASIS, or Mountain Star the other one, you'll have physicians that really want to make this their home and live down here and work in between those two hospitals. And so as we talk about it that way, Mountain View's actually more optimistic and excited about the prospect of us coming into this market to help make that happen. We'll shift patients away from Utah Valley. We're serving those patients now, and we have planned for that. We anticipate it. We're doing it to ourselves on purpose, and we'll pick up as we grow, continue to grow in the rest of the county. And then we talked about that physician mix. So what would this new facility look like? And I've been asked this a lot. And some of you, I have thrown out before that it will start out small and continue to grow. And I've used the model of an Orem, and I always worry about talking about Orem. In fact, probably a more applicable model, if you want to tell people, is something along the lines of the IASIS Hospital up in Lehigh. So if you see that as you're driving past on the right-hand side, Mountain Point, that's as I walk, I toured that with Kent, who's the administrator there, and almost everything we've talked about for your facility is about the same that you would find. And he's done the same thing. That's planned to grow as the community grows, and that's what we would do here. Different from Orem, Orem is very much a satellite of Utah Valley. And I don't mean just for neurosurgery and open-heart surgery and some of those high-end cases. If you go to the Orem ER and you have a broken leg and you need an orthopedic surgeon to take you into surgery, they do not respond to you at the Orem Community Hospital. We put you in an ambulance, and we bring you down to Utah Valley where they'll take you to surgery. That is not our vision for this hospital. This will be a full-service hospital, just like American Fork, like Mountain View. And so the specialists will be required to respond, to have privileges, and be a part of this community and a part of this hospital. So it's what you would want. It's what makes the hospital more successful. The only reason we haven't done that at Orem is just the proximity to Utah Valley is so close that it's been tough to do that. And then I already said this, this will be absolutely constructed with growth in mind. I do want to temper expectations again that it's not likely in my lifetime, I shouldn't say my lifetime, my career with Intermountain that you're going to see open-heart or neurosurgery, those types of things. It doesn't make sense for us to do that, but you will see this hospital grow, and you will see it get robust, and you'll have great care, something you can be very, very proud of as time goes on. So, and I think most of you know, you have physicians, wonderful physicians that live in your community now. This will bring more, and they make great citizens and a great contribution in so many ways in every community I've lived in. So here's where we are now. We go through an approval process. This has been on my docket of capital planning projects now for many years. We plan for five-year increments that we officially plan for, and then we even have, like you would, projects beyond that five-year plan that we're thinking about. Once you start moving forward in the five-year plan, that's when the projects become very real. And this has been in that five-year timing horizon for some time now and made it through that next cycle that we just had. So as a result of that, we will start latter part of this year, beginning of next year, to bring in engineers and consultants to start doing the master site plan for the campus. I get asked a lot, "How are you going to use that property?" And my answer is, "I don't know yet." And so I apologize, and obviously can come back and start getting into those details as we go on. But that will be the next phase where we'll bring somebody in and we'll start planning. We'll seek the input. I have two of our local board members here with us tonight, Everett Kelly Polo and Kirk Holsberg. Gosh, I almost drew a blank, Kirk, when I looked at you. Anyway, Kirk, of course, is with Mountain View Clinic, and we'll work closely with them as well as we lay out how we want to use this campus. And I've already had a lot of physicians that have talked about, "We want to come anchor ourselves next to the hospital," which is common to do. So I think you'll see some exciting things happen as we start to plan. But that's basically where we are. Again, I talked about the fact that we're anticipating breaking ground in 2018. Take about a two-year time to construct, open in 2020. Talked about Utah Valley project is roughly a $430 million project. This would be an $80 to $100 million project that we're anticipating if we get approval from the board as we go forward. With that, actually, that's the bulk of my presentation. So any questions for me?
Go for it.
Go for it. Okay. Awesome.
Just make sure Everett votes the right way.
On the facility?
Yeah. No, we're very excited to have you here. And the anticipation of the hospital coming here, Spanish Fork, has been long-awaited. And we're excited that you're getting close. We know nothing's set until you start digging, but...
That will help me. Appreciate you saying that.
I can tell you that your employees really love you.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
My daughter Haley Lundin just talks about you all the time and for us, and they just say how wonderful of a minister you truly are, so.
So I will tell you, we have, so I'm glad you brought that up. Haley's amazing, by the way. And the reality is, we can build the nicest buildings, and we can have the latest technology. What we are really about are those employees, I'm sorry, that every day come in and save lives. And in Haley's case, they literally do.
I'm proud of her.
They work in our cath lab and our heart services, so.
I'm proud of her.
We've got a lot that live here in your community and love you all, and we're excited. Some of those will want to stay close to home and work right here. So that much I can tell you, we have great employees and we'll have great staff at this hospital as well. Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Sure appreciate you. I think you were longer, Mike.
Maybe just a shade.
All right. Okay, moving on to our 101, Life Center Dell Robinson. Okay, then we'll have Pam. We'd rather have you anyway.
Thank you. I know I wasn't officially on, but I'm going to just give a little bit of information about the library.
Perfect.
And then it ties in with what Dell will follow.
Great.
Some of the questions that we've been getting asked about the library, we've been getting asked things about square footage, and Dell's going to cover that in detail, but with the possibility of this new facility, we'd be going from just under 12,000 square feet to what I understand would be closer to 18,000 square feet for the library portion, and then, of course, the shared space would give us increased opportunities for programming, and that would be, that would be exciting. Now, as far as any other statistics, we've been asked about circulation. Circulation this last year was 479,749. And as you can tell from 2004, it has gone up tremendously. Actual visits to the library, 2,000, 224,000, excuse me, 228. That's visits according to our people counter. That doesn't take into account anyone going down the elevator, of course. So, you know, give and take a little bit, but we've got a lot of people visiting the library. And we were also asked on how many accounts we currently have. We have over 10,000 resident family accounts and over 1,000 non-resident family accounts. And we've also been asked about how many of those are active users, and we can come up with roughly 75%. So well over 7,000 of those accounts are actively using. At least one or more people in the family are coming in and using accounts. The digital usage, of course, has increased. Last year, the fiscal year last year, we had well over 18,000 digital items that checked out. So that is figured into our total circulation numbers, but that gives you kind of an idea of the usage of the library. Programs, this wasn't something I was actually asked to get into, but I just wanted to mention, I had spoken with one of our program people earlier today, and she had mentioned that one of the programs that they had, it was the Mother Goose Storytime geared for little kids course, and she said that there were 60 children, over 60 children, and 30 adults in attendance. They were out in the aisles during the program, and there's a lot of people that had to leave because they couldn't attend it. This is just one small example of the program popularity, particularly for children. And as she's also pointed out, the ones who attend for the children for a program geared to one-to-three-year-olds, your four- and six-year-olds are going to be bored. They want more activities, more interest on their level. And so when we can offer these simultaneously, it's a great thing to offer. We would like to be able to do that at some point down the road. And those are some of the reasons why is because the popularity of the programs and the importance of teaching literacy to these children at a young age, it just, you can't put numbers to that. You can't put the importance, the value of it. And I think that's all. Have there been any other questions that any of you have encountered along this process of trying to determine what our needs are down the road?
I get asked a lot, is the library still going to be a free, public library?
The library will be free for our residents because, of course, we're funded through property taxes. For non-residents, they will pay a fee, just like they do now. They will pay a fee to use the library that is separate from the recreation portion. And their fee will be according, we usually, with libraries, we usually base it pretty closely to comparing to what a resident pays in taxes, maybe a little higher. So obviously, their fee would go up. Right now, it is $40 for a family for a full year, and theirs would go up as well from that, but they would be charged accordingly. Any other library questions?
Nope.
I appreciate all your support. Thank you all.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Pam. Appreciate you. Now we'll have Dell.
Well, Chris leaned over to me and said, "If I have to hear about this one more time, I'm voting against it."
Wow.
I didn't really know how he was voting, but we've been asked... Did I just throw you under the bus? I think I did, didn't I?
Well, I'll have to remember that when he keeps coming up over these roads.
Well, and let me just tell you, I think our objective here is all the same, and I appreciate what Rick's doing, but I think our objective is the same, and we've been asked to continue to keep this in front of the citizens, to continue to inform them. I'm sure that not every citizen watched three weeks ago when the presentation was made. And so we want to just continue to inform, 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 and educate, and let people know facts so they can vote. We want to get people excited about this issue, no matter which side they're on. Because I personally, and I know you don't, want this big of an issue to be decided by 10% of our people. And so I'd love to see 70% of them come out and voice their opinion. So I think our goal is the same, and so apologize if you've seen some of this before, but we're going to reiterate some things. Here's some of the frequently asked questions that I have received recently and some of the staff, and so we're just going to briefly talk about some of these. We won't elaborate on them, but one of the, one of the questions that we frequently get is, "Why can't we just expand the library where it is?" And so one of the concerns, and I know the Citizens Committee addressed this, and City Park is a central gathering place for our community, for many of our events. And so as we looked at possibilities and we had architects lay things out about how parking lots would go, how the building would expand, how we could create a drive-through book drop, which is critical to the library. Young mothers understand that more than anybody. It just consumed a lot of the park. And the citizens didn't really want to see that happen. And and the citizens didn't really want to see that happen. Did I forget how to use this every time? Or is it just not working? So anyway, that's the reason that we, not only is that a really old building and would require a lot of renovation in order to bring it up to where. It would be able to serve the many programs and things that Pam has going in there. They just weren't interested in in consuming our park with brick and mortar and asphalt. And so and there are other reasons. Which leads to the next question as to why, why are we building three, these three buildings altogether? And I know for some people that seems quite extravagant. But as we've, as we have, as we talked about this and studied this issue. It became very prevalent that that these buildings were needed. But we also realized that we have some, we have some space that is being used fairly inefficiently. And and we also, as we discussed, Pam had program needs that could be met through using the same space. That the senior citizens use twice a week for their luncheons. And so that's where this concept evolved about having three buildings altogether. And then as we started studying those across the country, this is actually not a new concept. And and by doing this, we're able to save, there's there's 8,300 square feet. That we do not have to build because we're using common areas that we're sharing. Which is equivalent to $3 million in savings by having. And there are other advantages. If you're a if you're a parent of young families, it's it's nice to have those services together. But it's also much more efficient. Efficient for us to to be able to use our space better. I'm just gonna. So I'll pretend like.
Nice job, White.
You want to tell him what that means, Mayor? So again, this is, this is a, this is a very, this is a concept you've all seen before, except for maybe those new folks that are watching. Again, it's it's very conceptual because we haven't spent money on architecture and all that stuff and don't intend to unless unless the citizens want to have this facility. But you can see how the configuration would be. And you've got the library who has access to this room for for various programs and things that they will run. The library is actually projected to be 18,400 square feet. 441, if you want the exact number. And the senior center is projected to be about 12,000 square feet. And so then you've got the aquatic center and the rec center portion of that as well, which is like 110,000 square feet. And so a lot of those are areas, again, that are going to be multi-use areas for all of the facilities to share. So when the seniors aren't using this facility, this becomes classrooms that we use for other programs. And this room, this multi-use room here where they have their luncheons becomes a program hall for Pam to utilize. It has a stage in it and various things, so. That's what we wanted to stress. And again, that's the answer to several questions is we've met with several groups, civic groups, chamber, soccer clubs. We're meeting with as many people as we can just to give them information on on why we're why we're doing or proposing some of the things we're proposing. Keep going. I've had some people ask me about this fieldhouse concept. Again, click another one over Seth, if you would. Here's just a couple of various shots of this. And what we're proposing, the the size of it is a 30 by 70 yard indoor soccer field. Which can be used for flag football or or you've got batting cages for baseball and golf and all those things, so. The interesting thing about this facility, I know, this particular facility is up in the basin at Park City. And they actually have a floor that goes down on this and they use this for many, many civic events. So some prestigious events that they use in there. They have birthday parties in here. It's it's, the concept is. Much, much more economical for us to generate revenue than a basketball court. And so there were some reasons behind why we went away from so many basketball courts. And decided that this would be a good feature to to include with the facility, which is unique. You don't see these around here. But there's a lot of different community uses that that we have with that. Okay, Seth, you want to click through? I don't think we need to review all this again. Again, these are features and amenities that that the citizens have said they would like to see. I think I need to say, though, that a lot of these things have been cut down from what was a large. A large group of ideas and thoughts from the Citizens Committee. To just those things that they felt like was the very core, that we needed, that they felt like they wanted to have in a facility. And. So again, Pam's covered the library. Libraries take on a whole different meaning nowadays than what they used to have. Let me touch on a couple of things with the seniors because and I and I've mentioned this before. But I'm I'm really concerned about this because we don't have any programming. Facilities or programs for those baby boomers who are 55 to 75 right now. They're looking for something much different than what we are currently able to offer them at our senior center. You won't see them going there. Because they're not, they don't want to play cards or do puzzles or do ceramics. They're active. They live active lifestyles and that's what they want. And I've given these numbers before, but Provo was serving 250 seniors before they built their rec center, senior center combined. And they have 2,000 memberships from seniors to the rec center. And so there's no question that these people are active. And right now we have nothing to provide for them in that regard. So again, another reason why I loved Provo's concept of combining these facilities so that they have the option, they have the option to do both. Okay, Seth, you can go ahead and click through this stuff. And okay, and so our proposed site, as you can see, is is at the sports park. We do have access to Main Street now, so you'll you'll be able to access it from there and have a presence on Main Street. The outdoor soccer fields will not be disturbed. We will, we will more than likely leave this maintenance building where it is. It will not need to be disturbed now. And so as I met with the soccer folks, they were obviously thrilled about that, that we weren't destroying the. These are, these are two of the best soccer fields around and they they know that and recognize that. We kind of have a reputation for that, not only with soccer, but baseball prior to that. And so they were pretty upset that they were going to lose those. But that is the proposed site for for those three facilities, which has all kinds of. Of positive attributes to it, being close to the sports park and and other recreational venues. I think Councilman Mendenhall already covered this, so I appreciate that. Let me, before we address this, though, one of the other questions I get quite a bit is how much will a pass cost? What about those that can't afford it? And of course, the, I've proposed a fee structure to this body, which if this happens, will be. Fine tuned two years down the road when this thing opens, two and a half, if it's passed. And so right now our proposed fees are anywhere from $140 a year to $445 a year for a family of six. And if you do the math on that, as the mayor did, that's $6 a month for each of your children for that membership. One of the things that I like too is we do have avenues for those that can't afford to use this facility, to be able to use this facility. A lot of the seniors we know are on fixed incomes. There's Silver Sneakers programs. There's all kinds of programs that are available to them. To be able to use the indoor track, which I hear from the seniors a lot. I need an indoor track and I need a place to swim indoors. And so there are programs out there that can assist them. So that they can also help do those things that will help them maintain a healthy lifestyle. One of the programs that Provo has done is an endowment fund, which we intend to to copy, to utilize. There are people and businesses that donate funds to help the underprivileged who maybe can't afford to be in this facility. Because we we want a facility that all of our city and our community can enjoy. Yes, this is a quality of life issue, but to me, it's much more than that. It's a, it's about creating a healthy community. And we just heard from Mr. Smoot and what their goal is, is helping people live the healthiest possible lives. And 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 I think this gives our citizens amenity to do that. We live in a, I mean, we live in a world that loves to be entertained. And so unfortunately with that comes all of the problems and challenges with it. From child and adult obesity to diabetes and heart disease and knee replacements and back problems and all the other things that come with us being unhealthy. And so I think this is much more to our community in terms of helping us to create a healthy environment. And also have an opportunity and a place for our kids and our young kids and our teenagers to be, that's a positive place to be. And give them positive things to do. Okay, Seth, keep going. So well, let me address this real quick, though. And Councilman Mendenhall and and to copy, for the other side, I'm amazed at how many people don't know this issue even exists. And so I do appreciate what's being done from others to get them out. This is not an abortion sign. You know, yes for life. It's a life center and I want people to know that. And and this has been explained already, but I appreciate the fact that we're getting people out there, citizens. That are taking an interest in this issue and they need to. It affects them. It is a lot of money. They just need to gather the facts and determine whether that's something that they want to have in their community. And so, but we want them to base their decision on facts. And so, go ahead, Seth. Again, there's the cost breakdown of the bond. I don't need to replay that again. All of this information, again, is available online. So please, I I encourage people to go get online, go to the website, look at the information, read the questions. If you don't have an answer to your question, then let us know and we'll get an answer to your question. Okay, Seth. So here's what Councilman Mendenhall was explaining and and I think this is critical. This is information that's critical, okay? So you can see that Spanish Fork's current tax rate, their portion of the tax bill is 9% of the entire tax bill. And so, yes, we are increasing Spanish Fork's portion of that 166%, okay? $201 a year, which is 1681 or 82, whatever that comes out to be, a month. So, but your entire property tax bill will increase 15%. And so that's based on a 200, a market value of a $200, $200,000 home. So that's an important fact to understand. You need to know what it is, not only what it is we're buying, but how much does it cost, really? Don't get deceived by the numbers that say we're we're increasing your taxes 166%. Okay, thanks. This one, again, is the same numbers, but you've, we've included the impact on businesses. And and so that's, that's the impact on a $202,000 business. Because they don't have the same residential exemption, so they're they're charged more money for their business tax.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Can you go back a slide? I, this is something that's been chewing on me for a while and I I think this is a, an opportunity at least to be able to mention it since the the facts and figures are here. Looking at the property tax increase, an average home, 202,174, that's market value for the home, correct? Now, that's not what someone pays for their home. And I mention that only because it's been put out through social media and discussions I've had with citizens that that are very informed and stuff. That the the city as a whole, city staff is trying to push this out and and is not putting out the information. That this is a $65 million project. Simply because over the life of the bond, should this pass, ultimately it will be 60 plus whatever dollars that that the citizens pay. That we pay, that I will pay, because I don't plan on moving in 20 years, unless I'm dead, but I can't, I can't, I can't do anything about that, but.
That's a good point.
Just in the interest of transparency, because there's a lot of people that have said the city's not putting out information. Quite frankly, there are a lot of people, myself included, that when we talk about our homes. We say, you know, oh, congratulations, we just moved to town, or oh, we just bought, you know, bought a house. We bought a house for $230,000. I don't know of a single person that has said, I bought a house for $438,000. Now, over the life of their mortgage, that's what they pay. Now granted, truth and taxation, yes, we can do the math. We can put it out there in the city. Perhaps at one point hadn't thought to put that out there. It is there now, but for all transparency, yes, it's a 60 some odd million dollar project. The amount of money the city is looking, and I'm not saying yay or nay, I'm just saying factual. The amount of money the city's asking to get permission to get a loan from the bank is for 39 some odd million dollars. When we go to the bank, we get a loan for $202,000. That's exactly what we do as citizens, because there's a lot of rhetoric talking about, well, we need to save money and we need to be stewards. Quite frankly, cities work differently than households do to a certain extent, and that's something I've learned my time on the council. We save money in households and buy things as we go. There are, if a water main breaks, the city doesn't always have $13 million that they can go and fix a water main. They have to go into debt to be able to repair it and things like that. So cities do work very differently. But quite frankly, for all transparency, yes, $65 million. No one debates that. 39 million, it's what's being asked for, same as our homes. 202,000 is the loan we ask for from the bank, but there is not a person that willingly says, oh, yes. I bought a house for $438,000 because they don't, we don't talk about those things. And so there are people that are watching, well, the city's trying to hide that information. Well, no. Do you hide that information when you talk to your neighbors? I don't. I don't hide it. I just don't think about that. I think this is what I am bonding for as a homeowner. This is what the city would bond for as citizens. Simply for transparency, not to defend one way or the other, but the numbers are there and the numbers are forthcoming.
Well, and I I appreciate that comment. I I think the city has been very transparent. We've got everything out there. We're not, we have nothing to hide. We have no reason to influence you one way or another to build this or not to build this. We just want to make sure you're making the decision on purely facts. And we have, we have no personal reasons to hide anything from anybody. If the citizens want this, great. If they don't, that's great. But it's our job to make sure that they're informed. So that they know exactly what it is they're getting for their, for their dollars.
Dale, real quick, sorry, before we leave this page two, I appreciate what Kier said there. But the the number up there of 202,000, residents should understand that that is a market value assessed by the county. Very often, when I look at that number from a bank standpoint of what an assessed value is of a of a property. That is different than the purchase price of a home or the appraised value of your home. So some people have said, well, 202, there, I can't find a home in Spanish Fork for 202,000. Well, if you went and looked at the tax value of a home that maybe just got purchased for $230,000, like Kier said or something. Oftentimes, you'll see that the market value is assessed by the county is a lower amount than maybe what the appraised value is or the purchase price is.
I own a more complex over on the, the north. The building next door sold for $387,000. My tax bill this year is at a rate of $387,000 on my, on my tax. My taxes, my building is now worth exactly what the building next door. My taxes, my building is now worth exactly what the building next door sold for.
So the county assessor came out and reassessed your building?
He reassessed every fourplex in, in, in that section of town, every one of them.
And, and I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that's a blanket statement, but some people are misinterpreting, saying, where can I find a two hundred and two thousand dollar home in Spanish Fork? It's not always the county tax value that you can sell that home for.
I understand. And then next year, when this comes on, now I've got a hundred and sixty-six percent on the city bill that's now going to add, go from that. My tax bill went up five hundred dollars in one year.
Because you gained equity that much?
Because of that equity. And then you, then the city comes along and they will capitalize on that equity. Because.
That capitalize in saying, if, if the city builds a facility this way and charges you that, where's that money going to that the city would charge you for? Where's that hundred and sixty-six percent increase going to?
It will, yeah.
It'll go, it'll, it'll go to buy an asset.
Right.
Right? The city's gonna increase your taxes, you're gonna get an asset built for that. Okay? The hard part that I have a time with in my own personal home too, is yeah, when my, when my value goes up and the county charges me more taxes for that, for that equity, what value did I get? Except for maybe when I sell my home, right? They just assessed my property and said, now instead of it being worth two fifty, it's worth two seventy-five, so we're gonna tax you on two seventy-five. Unless I sell it, I'd, or, or borrow more money or something, I don't get, I don't get the advantage from that, but the, in all transparency, the city increasing your taxes here, your, your portion of your taxes is to directly go to an asset, not to just tax you because you have property.
But it's not my asset.
If you're a resident, it's your asset. If you're a property owner, you, you bet it's your asset. It's, it's definitely your asset.
But if you're my co-owner, it wouldn't be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think we're done.
You're done?
Seth, let me see. Seth? Can you? That's it? Okay, we already did that. Well, turn the next, there is something left. Keep going. There we go, the most important part. So please, uh, if you're against this issue, please go talk to your friends and neighbors. If you're for this issue, please go talk to your friends and neighbors. Uh, I'd love nothing more than to have a huge turnout at the polls on this issue. And so that, that's our, that's our plea, is that, uh, is that the voice of the people be heard, so. That can only happen if we get everybody out.
Along those lines Dale, uh, I've, I've spoke with a lot of people about it. And I wanna make sure that people respect when people aren't comfortable telling you, and I've had that in a few, in a few cases. It is a private thing to some people, and so I wanna make sure that, uh, people are, people are, you know, respectful. If people haven't made up their mind, you know, but like you say, I, I completely agree with you, but, but there are some people that.
Well, we need, we need to be civil.
Or not, yeah.
We're all, we're all on the same team here. Uh, it's just a matter of priorities and what, what people wanna see in their community. And uh, and hopefully we get, we get enough people, they can tell us that, so.
Well, we will. In November, they'll tell us.
Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale. Consent items?
Can I make one comment?
Oh geez. Okay, you can.
Just to add to clarification. Um, one important part about the taxes, right now, the increase to an average home is the, the number of the sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents. That's the value right now with the number of homes and businesses, the value that we have right now. So as our community grows and there's more and more homes, then there'll be more and more value to pay for that Rex, the, the life center. And so from, from this, from this for, time forward, as there are more and more subdivisions are being built, that sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents will be the highest, the, the tax will be on the community. From here on out, it'll gradually go smaller and smaller, because more and more people are paying, um, the tax towards that, so. There's a set amount, there's a set amount of a loan payment that we need, and if there's more people paying on it, then everybody's portion goes down.
We're growing at about roughly three hundred homes a year, Dave Anderson?
Two to three.
Almost exactly the average going back to.
Three hundred homes a year? And is there any way of backing into a number saying, probably not, because the home values are going to be different for those new three hundred homes? So what my question was is, could you come up and say, for every year, three hundred homes would equate to?
You'd have to know the value.
This much dollars coming down off of your average sixteen. That would be.
If you knew an average, if it was two hundred thousand, then you could.
But it would be a speculative number then, so it wouldn't be accurate, but, but you're saying it will go down.
And another interesting, uh, fact about the property tax and the certified tax rate is once the certified tax rate is set on an aggregate across the whole city, that's all the values and the home and how much dollars there are, we get the new growth each year, but as places are being reassessed at a higher rate, I mean, a higher value, overall, the certified tax rate will be lowered. And so by theory, it should not go up, but it's following an aggregate across everybody. So if one individual place might change, might impact differently than the aggregate across. So in theory, values going up should not cause your dollars that you pay to go up. They should, the, the county has control of that certified tax rate. They should lower that rate to give us the same dollars we got last year, plus the new growth of new homes that are here.
Which people should know that's lowered over time, right? I mean, our certified tax rates come down as our.
So twenty years ago, we were at twenty eight?
There's a good graph.
Right, right here. Okay, so you can see back what our rate was. Not the total rate, the red, the red line right there. So in nineteen ninety, when, just before I start here, our rate was twenty-nine, you see that twenty-nine thirty? So you can see as values, as appraisals were growing, everybody's home started to rise. Look what happened to our rate as we went down. And so now we're clear down to ten, down here at a ten for two thousand and fifteen compared to a twenty-nine where we were. And so that's, that's how the certified tax rate works. As values go up, you know, your hundred thousand dollar home you bought twenty years ago is now worth four hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, or whatever, if you take care of it. Those values have been driving down the rate, so we've got the same dollars we did clear back in two thousand, uh, or nineteen ninety, but we've added new growth and that's where our property tax dollars to the city has gone up. So anyway, just kinda one-on-one on.
So that shows sixty-three percent over the last twenty-five years, it has gone down.
Pretty good deal, living in Spanish Fork.
Sixty-three percent.
That's the rate though.
On the rate.
That's the property tax rate, but if somebody would say, your property taxes never go down as far as Spanish Fork's rate, would be false. Your property tax rate has declined sixty-three percent.
It has.
In twenty-five years.
And they, and they apply that model for the most part. There's been a year, for the fire station, we did raise it for those number of years, a small amount, and then when the fire station was paid off, then that part was taken off and it was declined, so.
There you go. Thank you, one-on-one. All right, consent items? Don't all speak at once. Diamond Fork Riding Club. Contract. Oh, it's amazing you got to wait all that time to come here.
Wake up.
Wait a second, White, I can just taste those donuts right now. So why didn't you know that?
I think that's happened a couple of times, if you think.
And I believe.
You had time.
I believe Chief Adams went off too, back then, so.
Oh, I saw you step down.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the first contract that we have tonight is the Diamond Fork Riding Club contract. Uh, as you're aware of, uh, this is an organization that started in, uh, as far as records can tell, nineteen forty-three, when a group got together in a barber shop and started the Diamond Fork Riding Club and started the Fiesta Days rodeo. And I think your, your dad was on that, wasn't he?
He was one of the early members, yeah.
Charter member, so, uh, anyway, now through the years, the rodeo's grown and everything and that, and then the city, it's been a joint venture to put on the Fiesta Days rodeo with the city and the riding club, because we needed more backing, which has been phenomenal and a great thing for both parties. And, uh, with that, uh, this is, uh, renewing the contract that we have had and this entitles them to use arena two nights a year throughout the summer and one night through the winter, one, one day a month through the winter, and then have the Buckaroo rodeos for the youth program that we have down there. And this contract will go for five years. And, uh, I really would personally like to thank the Diamond Fork Riding Club for all that they did and, and I'm glad that I'm a member of it, and it's a, it's a good organization for our, our community. And I know that Whites, uh, the president right now, would just like to say a few things.
Um, we'd just like to thank the council and the mayor for our partnership with the rodeo and, uh, using your facilities and, and what we get to, you know, we do get some funds from the rodeo and we appreciate that, you know, it's been able to make us more than just a riding club, I think now. You know, we've got ourselves involved in a lot of community things, the, the veterans, Buckaroo rodeos, um, sub for Santa.
Boy State.
We do, Boy State. Um, we do a, a lot of great things for the community, support the, the stock show and, and try to, you know, keep our heritage alive with, with animals and, and things like that. But, uh, I just wanna say thanks to you guys, you guys leaving, you guys have done an awesome job as, as council members and we appreciate that. And one last thing, I do want everybody to know, that miracles do happen in Spanish Fork. This year, Fiesta Days, one did happen. Somehow, this body.
That is a miracle. Holy, thanks White Steve.
Let's see it again, just to prove it.
Let's put him on again.
Go out there and put him on.
Oh geez.
In fact, I think SFCN just replayed that the other night.
Tell me about the Silver Tour Rodeo and Gold Tour Rodeo.
Right now, the, the rodeo is a Silver Tour. The next step would be a Gold Tour. And, uh, if we became Gold Tour, there's only five, uh, Gold Tours in the United States. Uh, San Antonio, Reno, Cody, and Ellenburg, I believe, I can't remember for sure, I think Salinas. It, it would be the next step for Fiesta Days rodeo.
Is that something that, uh, we're looking at and is it something that we could do?
Yes, we've, uh, in the rodeo committee, we've, we've been talking about that and doing it. We've been contacting the sponsors and, uh, talking to them a little bit about increasing, uh, their donation to it. And, uh, I think that it's getting pretty close. And I think it'd be a good step for us. It would, it really do.
Great. Go ahead, move on. Reader's Digest version.
So the next, uh, contract is the Saddle Dusters. And, uh, the Saddle Dusters is another organization that we have down at the fairgrounds. And, uh, they use the arena one night throughout the summer from April to November that they do down there. And they have a, a service project that they return back to the city in lieu of doing that. And they were the ones that really helped us with the stock trade and they got the stock trade rolling and everything and that. And, uh, uh, we'd like to renew that contract for five more years. And Tammy would like to say something representing them.
Well, I too would just like to thank the mayor and the city council for their past support and current support of our riding club. We appreciate all that, you know, the facility is beautiful and we appreciate the opportunity to use it and then to give back to the community as we can.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, contract is the Frontier Rodeo. The rodeo committee did a lot of research in that, uh, trying to find out, uh, the best stock contractor. If we're gonna be the best rodeo, we gotta have the best stock contractor.
Oh wow, they found it.
Now look at that. There's living proof, Whites.
How do you, how do you top that?
He must have lost him.
So back to Frontier Rodeo, so, uh, going around and, uh, thanks to the wisdom of Dave tonight, we come up with a bonus program too, that, uh, no other rodeo has ever did. But anyway, uh, we researched and had Frontier Rodeo come into the rodeo last year. The rodeo committee has discussed and everything and, uh, wanting to bring them back. And, uh, we feel like that they are the best stock producer going down the road there is in the PRCA right now that can put on their rodeo, all around. And, uh, the stock that they have nominated for the national finals, they have more stock going to the national finals this year than any other stock producer. Uh, we're really thrilled to have them back. This contract will get them back for five years. This will put us everything in there solid for twenty and twenty. As far as the rodeo committee is concerned, we are very, uh, strong on the riding club, the Diamond Fork Riding Club, the Saddle Dusters and Frontier's, uh, contract. We think that it's very important that they all stay and, uh, success keeps going. And I did have a surprise for the rodeo committee for tomorrow night, but since more than half of the rodeo committee is in here tonight, I'd like to share a little, uh, news with you, and especially to you guys. Last week I received a phone call from the Wilderness Circuit Director and Spanish Fork was chosen as, uh, they, they tied for first place in the Wilderness Circuit for Rodeo of the Year.
Wow.
This, uh, beats out Reno, Caldwell, Nampa, uh, Ogden, Days of Forty-Seven. We were the number one rodeo in the Wilderness Circuit. And, uh, soon as I got done with that, I received another phone call two hours later. It was from the W P R A, that's the Women's Professional Rodeo Association, Janet Crawford. She told us that we received Rodeo of the Year. We tied for first place with Rodeo of the Year. We received this honor in twenty thirteen. We received it again this year. We were the best outdoor rodeo in the United States. We were tied for first place. That's a big statement, when you're beating Salinas, Pendleton, the granddaddy of them all, Cheyenne. We were number one, so.
Awesome.
We have the facility down there that Dale was hands-on with that is known as, known as the best rodeo facility in the United States. In the, in the rodeo industry, it's the best rodeo facility in the United States. So appreciate it. We've come a long ways and we'll go gold and we'll hit it.
Thanks Steve.
So I think whoever, whoever we're tied with, we should have Whites have a sumo wrestle off. How do you think? We can break that tie, can't we?
Oh no, hey, you're talking. Angie, will you put him on the DACA for, agenda for next council meeting?
Uh, the contract item on there is relating to the arena. We had a, an anonymous donor that helped us build that arena. And we've had a verbal contract with them to, uh, provide tickets for them and their family because of the substantial donation that they made to help us build that facility. And, uh, we have decided we needed to formalize that and make it official in writing. And so, uh, they're, they actually have three box seats in the arena for, uh, our rodeo events, the Champions Challenge and the Fiesta Days rodeo. So, uh, that's what your, uh, that's what the agreement is for. We've been living that already for the last several years, but decided we needed to formalize that. Any questions?
Sounds good. If I hear about one more UDOT program again in this meeting.
I actually really enjoyed going over all that again. Thanks Dale. UDOT and, and with MAG, we, we're doing some sidewalk on Fourth North, right there under Highway six. And, uh, this is a contract with P E C to do construction management of that project. The project is fully funded by grants, so it doesn't affect any city budget, but we do need to approve the contract. Any questions on that? Uh, next, uh, we updated our professional services agreement. We need to get one in place for J U B engineering. And then lastly, uh, with our new impact fees, uh, going. And then, lastly, uh, with our new impact fees, uh, going through the billing and the reimbursement of those impact fees, for two reasons, it, it makes a lot of sense to change our contract so that we make payment on reimbursement agreements once annually. The first reason is, uh, it might be, uh, easily contested if we are reimbursing on an impact fee project that is not yet in our impact fee facilities plan. So that gives us time to get every project that a developer might front into our impact fee facilities plan. The second reason is, is, uh, just logistically trying to reimburse on eleven different agreements, calculating quarterly how much we've collected in impact fees, uh, is very time-consuming, and this would allow us to just print a final statement, go off of the statement, and, and pay everyone, it'd be much, much easier for my staff to calculate, uh, what the reimbursements are, and so we've talked to most all of the developers who have impact fee agreements, and they've agreed to change their existing contracts for reimbursement to, to be reimbursed annually, and, uh, this would be the first of several that'll be coming in, so.
Great. Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Approval of election poll workers. Kent, you wanna tell us about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
Okay, it is election time, and we've been advertising or requesting for poll workers to come sign up, and we had a lot of people sign up, but we didn't have enough. So tonight, I have the list of all those that have signed, uh, have, uh, signed up. We have, uh, seven different polling places, and we have three poll workers at each place that's gonna work all day until eight o'clock, but at six o'clock in the evening, we have counters come in, three counters at each polling place, and they will start the counting process at six o'clock, when the polls close at eight, then they'll gather what's come in between six and eight, and then they'll keep, finish up counting, and they'll be done around nine, nine-thirty, and we get the results, tentative results as far as that night. Of course, we have the, the ones that can still come in, the provisionals that need to be tested, and stuff like that. Tonight, what you're doing is approving the list of election judges that, that have signed up. I still need, folks at home, I still need four, uh, judges, uh, called poll workers. There are counters, I need four counting one, uh, to be able to come in at, uh, six o'clock and work until about nine-thirty, it'll be, I have some training, if you've never done it before. Um, next Monday, we'll have some training here for all the counters and the poll workers. So if you're interested in that, uh, come give me a call, but for tonight, the council's going to approve the list of judges, barring the four that I still need to find, but, uh, tonight they're on the list.
Do, do the counters or the poll workers have to live in the district that they?
They do not.
They do not?
They do not. They'll be assigned, uh, I list them what district they are, and you can see some of them. I've tried to put some of the new ones with some of the seasoned ones that have done it before, so I've kinda moved them around so they'll know what's going on, plus they'll have an hour training next Monday for all those, an hour for the poll workers, and then an hour for the counters, that, for next week.
For the fun of it, none of them do it for the money, but...
There's a small stipend. Hundred dollars for the all-dayers, so if you add that out from six in the, six-thirty in the morning until eight-thirty at night for a hundred dollars, it's a good volunteer, I appreciate that, and I recognize that service. The counters will get, uh, forty-five dollars for work for those, uh, several hours in the evening, and they'll get a ten dollars to come to the training. So there is, you get paid for the training, and you get paid for the, the hours that you work, but there, it's not money to retire on, but it's, uh, there is a stipend for them, so.
Great. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve the election poll workers.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I move we're going to close session for reasonably imminent litigation and lay land transaction. Got a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman
Second.
Scobes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that was here.